All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 15th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Apologize, we're starting a little bit late. Executive session went a little bit longer than we anticipated. I'll read the agenda, even though the timing isn't right anymore. Seven, Citizens Input. Seven oh five, Wayfinding and Branding. Seven twenty Rotary Temporary Traffic Control Plan. Seven forty Gillette Stadium Manual Event License. Eight o'clock Selectmen's Update. Eight oh five Town Managers Update. Eight ten Assistant Town Managers Update. And then we have a few action items. Leah, would you lead us? All right. Citizens Input.
Keeping us on our toes.
I was gonna say, you should sit right up front.
Pat Stevens, 63 Mechanic Street. I want to give a heads up for Chris. I don't know if you've been at Mechanic Street. Yes, our engineer. There's a speed limit, 30 sign, that's now blinking. And I have noticed people are slowing down a little bit. So, and I don't know what morning it was, but I was on my way to work at six o'clock, and he was on Mechanic Street, spray painting with an orange can, those, whatever those things are. We had to avoid one morning in the dark, so those are things he does that we don't see sometimes.
Nice job, Chris.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Wayfinding and Branding. Hi.
Paige Duncan, Planning Director, if you don't know. So, as you all are aware, but for anybody watching on TV who hasn't heard, Foxborough received a grant last year to obtain consultant services to help us establish a bit of a brand for our downtown. We've talked quite a bit about it, but just want to run you through the project a little bit, and we're ready, we've submitted some documentation, and we're ready to get into the nitty-gritty of this. So, the goal when we started out was basically to ensure continued vibrancy of the downtown. We've mentioned that the master plan identified the downtown area as the number-one area needing improvement, and also one of the most special places in downtown. So, it was showing how much people in the town really care about this area. We also want to support our businesses and create a sense of vitality, a sense of place, and a destination. So, these wayfinding and branding projects, as supported by the State of Massachusetts through their Downtown Initiative Program, are a way to help communities sort of establish this sense of place. So, what our first step to do is to sort of create a working group, and here's a list of the folks that participated in the working group. As you could see, we had a varied representation. We had numerous meetings, and fairly well-attended, especially to start. We did taper off as we got into the more nuts and bolts, but we did, were able to come up with a visual that the committee was pleased with. So, we, through the process, the consultant led us through sort of the historical context, and what he calls an ideation exercise. So, we were able to go through and identify important symbols and characteristics of the community. One of the items that was identified as unique and special was the fence around the common. So, when we get to the images, I could show you, but the signage would be sort of framed by replication of the fence at the top, at the bottom there. So, it's kind of a nice little nod to the common fence. And then the graphic ends up being a portion of Memorial Hall with the statue above, the Sentinel above it. They're historical, yet timeless. We were trying to stay away from trendy or anything, sort of very commercial. During the color and sort of ideation exercise, there were many colors presented, and the blue and gold slash yellow really stood out as identifying for Foxborough. And then one of the big things that for this project that sort of, I don't want to say derailed us, but it distracted us a bit, was all the existing signs out there. We've talked about this before, where we have too many signs out there. So, one of the things we identified as our working group was that we needed to get rid of some sign clutter. I know the visuals aren't great on this graphic. I do have a handout, but this is sort of the family of elements that were designed. You can't see it as closely, but here, this is sort of the replication of the common fence. We did choose to have the black around there. I think the consultant went through a lot of this, so I don't want to spend too much time on that. So, getting into specifics, you asked us for specifics previously. We're proposing to remove 41-hour parking signs located on School, South Liberty, Central, Coacit, Bird, and Mechanic Streets. We do have a sign over in the back of the room that shows every sign in downtown and indicates by color code whether it would stay or go, or be questionable. They're very hard to look at, more, they're available if anybody wants to, but we've distilled it down to this summary. We're proposing to remove one 15-minute parking sign in front of 11 Bird Street. We're not, that was a throwback. The Hair Salon was the last one there, and I know they had asked for it to be removed, or they wanted it removed.
They didn't request it.
No? Okay, well, they did sort of through us. And, but they're gone now. But anyway, we're suggesting to remove that 15-minute sign. We're proposing, since you've just been through the primo pizza exercise, we're not proposing to touch those signs. And then putting the ball in your court with respect to the Bird Street signs, there were, there might, there's a possible change of use down at that end, and we'll let you decide on that one. Right now, we're not recommending one way or another, but, you know, we, I did count, I think, three or four 15-minute signs on Bird Street out of 11. So, it's a little questionable over there whether the, they need that many, but I'm going to leave that one to you. There's a, all the white 40, 140 signs, those would be proposed to remove. There's a large, the large green directional signs, those would remain. Chris thinks he might be able to take the I-95 blue one, that looks quite official, and strap that over to one of the poles with the green on there to sort of get rid of another sign pole. And it's amazing how much bigger that sign is when you get up next to it. You know, it looks like a little sign, but when you're up there, it's pretty big. That would actually leave the Seculent Island over in front of Bay Colony clear of all signage, and then there'd be only one sign on the first island. And then the other ones on the third island, you really, you know, we need some traffic control. You need like do-not-enter and stops, although the question has come up whether you do need stops there, and that was discussion last week. And then remove all the old parking signs. There's just a few parking signs over on Wall Street and Coacit Street that go to our parking areas, because we are proposing to replace those with our wayfinding signs. And then there's one sign that references Town Hall Municipal Lot at Liberty and Central, and again, we'd be replacing that. So, these are the signs to be removed. You do have a report that lists all that. And then we'd be looking to do new parking signs. We actually walked the site. We had Ryan and Chris, Gabby, myself, we all walked through the whole downtown and looked at actual locations. So, we do have a rather sophisticated map over here of our, of our proposed locations. So, we're proposing a single-sided parking sign, Wall Street, right in front of Eight Wall Street, that would replace the old one. Coacit Street would be a double-sided. That'd be installing a new base on the sidewalk in front of the Verizon Building. At South and Liberty Place, we'd be double-sided. We'd have to kind of figure out the best location of that, because we don't want to clutter up the corner over here by the monuments and whatnot. Mechanic Street, double-sided. We'd be using an existing base for the one-hour parking in front of 15 Mechanic. Then we'd need a single-sided on Mechanic. This is a little bit of a tricky area, because the railroad tracks, so we actually, that would be done, sort of located on, like, out on the field. But it's basically between sort of Cumberland Farms and the railroad tracks somewhere there, so the folks coming into town would see it best. And then over at Railroad Ave, we do have that new parking lot, so we were thinking at the sort of kitty-corner, the railroad and Bird sort of nestled over there. We could have it so that folks coming from either Bird Street or Railroad would be able to see it with one sign. So, those were just, but your parking, the arrows would obviously be, depending on what direction they were to go in, but those are your sort of basic wayfinding parking. Then, we have these modified directional signs, and these are basically where they'd be identifiable as Foxborough with the motif, but then we'd have them directing you to have certain amenities like parking. We'd have one at Central and Wall Street, double-sided, come to the Town Hall, the post office, and parking. We would have one over at South Street and School Street, which would be single-sided, directing to Town Hall, Recreation Schools, and parking. Parking arrows would be in both directions. We would be able to use an existing base for that one. And then Coacit Street and Bird Street, a single-sided, directing to parking and library. Obviously, these details of the wording and such could be changed if we want to dig in a little deeper on that. If someone else, as they're seeing this, has a suggestion for another location that we might have omitted, we're glad to talk about that. But these were the general main amenities we felt that needed to be mentioned. And then, sort of as a welcome gateway type thing, we're looking at something like Welcome to Foxborough Common, and these would be sort of like a block outside of town. And so, we're looking at Main Street in the vicinity of Granite Street, Mechanic Street in the vicinity of Railroad, Coacit Street, right near 21 Coacit, and then Central Street in the vicinity of Gray Road. We also do want to do that one down at South Street and Liberty Place, but we couldn't really come up with a good location, and we don't want to force it yet. So, we don't know what's going to happen over on, if Mr. Lynch is going to do anything over there. Perhaps we'd look at it then, but for right now, we didn't want to like jam a sign in just for the sake of jamming a sign in. So, for right now, we're holding off on that one unless someone has a strong feeling. We walked it, and it was just kind of difficult to, you know, there's residential properties along there, and we just don't necessarily want to put it in just because. So, we're looking for the best location, and we just, we held off on that recommendation right now. So, how are we going to pay for this? That was something you guys asked. The estimate for the current proposal for materials is about, is under $5,000. It is subject to bidding. Mr. Faverman did say that with the tariffs that went in place, some prices have gone up. I did check with a few towns, and the pricing seemed on point, so go from there. We do have received $3,000 in funds in the gift account. I believe you accepted it the last weekend. I know Mr. Keegan has a promise of another $5,000 coming from someone else, and I've heard of some possible other donations. If we didn't have that, and if there was a gap, I would propose that we have some funds in the Economic Development Fund, which that, those funds are collected when you do a liquor license, and it goes in an account controlled by you. And I would suggest that perhaps any remaining, you know, if we did fall short, which I'm not sure we would, but if we did, I would suggest that perhaps this would be very clear use of economic development funds for the downtown. So, and that's really what I have.
How about the phases, too? How this is just phase one?
This is just phase one for right now. I think we're just, we, you know, really, the decluttering took up so much effort. You know, Ryan really did a tremendous job, and Tom Murphy and his son, between all them, I mean, there's just hundreds of signs out there. So, we spent so much time on that, and then we knew, we were aware of funding. We didn't want to do, go too crazy. And also, we just really wanted to start to get a feel for it, create this sense of destination. I think as it becomes successful, it'll become clear. We also are working with the downtown group on banners, you know, so we're trying to really start to create this in phases. I do think that we'll be back with more proposals, but for right now, we felt this was a fair and good start, to sort of not go too crazy as we evolve.
Good.
No, I was just going to say, on the, on the parking signage, be very careful with white on yellow.
Okay.
Very difficult to see, particularly in daytime.
Okay.
You might want to contrast the yellow, maybe go back with the blue on the P.
On the P, you know, that's a good point.
Other than that, I think it's very well thought out.
Thank you.
My only thought, with one of the directional signs, you had schools. Would you want to be more specific, like high school or school administration?
Well, that's the thing. It gets, I mean, you are limited, obviously, in the amount of text you can fit on there, and the more you do, the smaller it has to be, and you want to be able to read it. And we just kind of felt that schools were somewhat general enough, because there's a few schools down that way.
There's three down that way, yeah.
So, but again, that's something, we're certainly looking for input on that, you know, if there's a better way of doing it, but, you know, if you start to break it down, I don't know that we could call out every school.
Right.
So, have to trade that off.
Okay.
So, Chairman, just to, just to edify one of the comments that Paige had made. So, certainly, you know, fundraising now is important to try and get this program running where it should be. So, the $5,000 that Paige alluded to was actually a, the developer who was, who just recently did Mansfield.
Forbes Crossing.
Forbes Crossing, rather, was, had agreed to build a Welcome to Foxborough sign as part of his, his project. And that what happened was that the, he ran into problems with getting DOT to approve the area where they could put it. So, I approached him, I said, "Look, instead of doing that, would you be, we just came up with this new program for new signage in the downtown. Would you be willing to contribute that same amount of money you're going to contribute to that towards this?" So, he agreed to do that. So, so that's just a redirection of some existing funding that was already earmarked for someone for another area. But certainly, anybody who wants, I know that some people have contributed towards the effort already, and I think it's certainly, we're welcomed, we welcome the opportunity to take more if people will do that.
And just to point out, these, these are my particular favorites. We didn't get them in phase one, but I mean, that might be something eventually we want to work with, where you could have, you know, actual names of schools or something.
Okay.
These are kind of a nice little feature. But we didn't, again, we were very cognizant of not being clutter. We have so much clutter out there, we wanted to make sure this wouldn't add to clutter out there. So, for right now, that's why we aren't, it wouldn't go with that one.
Okay, yeah.
And speaking of adding to clutter, so, we just have to all work together about new signs. So, if someone asks for a sign that we don't just put it up, that they have to actually go through a process to request a sign, like maybe a form, come before the Board of Selectmen, would look at it, so just being more strategic as we peel things away, what new signs go up. And we'll obviously have to keep an eye to that with the traffic patterns, so I think that those two are going to tie in together. But we just need to all make sure that we don't re-clutter.
Agreed.
Together.
Agreed.
Are you all done with the consultant that helped with this, or is that still ongoing?
No, we are done. He is, I believe, waiting to see what you guys do to put in his final report. So, there will be a report that comes out of it, but basically, he's done with us.
Do we use up the entire grant?
Well, you get services? So, yes. We don't get the money. We get $15,000 worth of consultant services, so I would contend he says yes. And, you know, he has, he's been very good, you know, as I've asked for different changes and what, and he's been very available to us. So, in fact, I didn't ask him to come out tonight. I decided to do this one on my own. So, he might have, I just figured we'd be better off on our own.
So, the other phases, do you guys have all of that from him, from the work?
We will. I mean, so, once he finalized it, then yes, he gives us the specs, so that when we, then we go out to bid with that. But yes, we should be able to formulate a new bid package for Phase Two, using what he has.
What do you need from us now? Are we voting to approve Phase One?
Well, I'm hoping you would vote to approve. You might want to see if there's any public comment, because I know we do have somebody from the Historical Commission here that might want to have. I don't know if he has any comments. No? Well, I wanted to make sure you were represented and...
He served on a committee, so he was...
Yeah, he did serve on it. But I also want to make sure everybody has a chance to be heard, and so, yeah. But so, we are hoping for a vote, and if you were willing to give us a sort of fallback funding, perhaps, you know, we've, we're at a gap of $2,000, maybe not to exceed that or something to that effect, and then obviously, we wouldn't use it if we get additional donations.
But if Bill's pretty sure that we're going to get to 5,000, you're going to be over.
But does that, is that for over there only?
No, it's for, it's for...
For any of it?
For any of the sign. It's just general use, so.
Never mind.
It wasn't specifically for that area.
Okay, great.
That's great.
I had it earmarked sort of as a gateway sign into town, so I didn't want to count on it for everybody. So, I guess I don't need funding. I'm wondering if the Board of Selectmen wants to support this, and let us figure out how to get it done.
So, maybe move to approve Phase One of the wayfinding, wayfinding and branding proposal. What do you think? Does that cover it?
I make a motion to accept the wayfinding project, the initial aspects for the downtown center.
Phase one.
Phase one.
Second.
All right. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Good work, everybody.
Yeah, that was great work, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a really great group.
Awesome. Thank you, Paige.
I think we missed a few World Series games during this.
Yes. That wasn't happening. World Series were more relevant.
Yeah, that's right. Not as relevant this year.
Another fun project. The Rotary Temporary Traffic Control Plan.
Anybody up there?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, I'll let Tim take the podium.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Chris Gallagher. I'm the town engineer, for anybody watching at home. We're back here tonight to continue discussion on the traffic patterns around the common and look for an approval on a trial to move forward. I have with me Tim Thompson with Par Corp., who's the consulting engineer, who's been working on, on this project going back to last spring and really a little bit before that as well. So, just a little quick recap, last spring, we came before the board with, with the design and plan that Par had done to address some of the concerns that were had, voiced around the common. It was the strong desire of the board to have a public meeting to get input from residents and business owners around the common and throughout town. We did that last Tuesday. It was a good meeting. It was a good discussion. We heard some concerns. We heard some support. We had police chief there. Bill Keegan was there. Tim was there doing some presentations, as well as Paige and planning board staff and various members of the community. So, we're here before you tonight. We're going to go through some of the features of that design, and then really focus on the one piece that we're looking to move forward at this point in time, which is up on the Main Street intersection. So, with that, I'm going to let Tim go through some slides.
That's conserving.
Which he is.
Old-fashioned still works sometimes.
There you go. Thank you, Chris. Again, my name is Tim Thompson. I'm a traffic engineer with Par Corporation. As Chris mentioned, we've been looking at the common for several months now, looking to analyze ways that we can improve traffic circulation through the common, and really develop something that can be implemented for, for a trial period. So, tonight, I'm just going to go through what we've done to date, recap of what we've studied thus far, and ultimately provide the recommendation that, that we've given to the town for implementing this, this trial. So, just to touch on existing conditions of the common, as I'm sure you all are very familiar with it, but Foxborough Town Common is formed by the convergence of seven roadways. It forms a rotary-style type of intersection layout, consists of two circulating travel lanes going through the, the rotary. There's the landscape park center of the rotary, which is where the common itself. There's both angled parking, there's parallel parking that surround the common. There's multiple crosswalks, there's sidewalks that are throughout the common. So, it's really an area, it's really a unique space. It serves a multiple, it serves multiple types of users, vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists. So, there's, there's a lot of different conflict points, there's a lot of different users, there's a lot of traffic volume that utilizes this, this network. So, I'm just going to, the aerial behind me here, just to orient you with, with where we are looking at the common. This is Main Street that comes into the common from the north, Central Street to the south, Mechanic and Coacit up at this leg of the intersection. So, this orientation will kind of continue on throughout the rest of this, this presentation, just so you're familiar with it. We've done quite a bit of traffic observation throughout the common. I'm just going to point out some of the more notable traffic behavior characteristics that we've seen. There is a significant period of traffic congestion during the PM peak hour. Most notably, the, the southbound entrance to the common from Main Street experiences recurrent congestion, reaches over 2,000 feet. We've actually, we've gone out, we've timed how long it takes a vehicle to get from the back of that queue until you enter into the common. It's been about four or five minutes during, during typical weekday peak periods. Mechanic Street also experiences some recurrent congestion, much, much less than that which is observed on, on Main Street. But Mechanic Street, we can typically see a queue of about 550 feet or 20 to 25 vehicles during that PM peak hour. There's less congestion on Central Street, but still some recurrent congestion, more in the range of the 250 feet, 10 to 15-vehicle typical peak during that, that PM afternoon rush hour period. Another observations is that drivers really tend to use the outer lane of the common. So, as I mentioned, the, the common has two circulating travel lanes, and really, the fact that there's no way to directly enter, exit the common from that center lane really contributes to the fact that, that drivers feel a lot more comfortable circulating the common through that outer lane. That gets into limiting gaps for vehicles that approach the common to actually be able to enter the common, so that, that's fairly critical when we talk about some of the ways that we're trying to improve traffic circulation throughout the common. Drivers also tend to, there's also a lack of turn signal usage that we've noticed out there. When a driver is exiting the roundabout or rotary, I should say, that frequently, they aren't using their traffic, their, their turn signal. A driver that's looking to enter into the rotary can, can miss a gap if that happens to occur. Driver behavior can also be aggressive. Drivers are willing to accept narrower gaps in traffic. Vehicle speeds can also be high. We've gone through a data collection effort throughout the common. We did traffic counts back in May when school is in session. We collected data during the typical weekday PM peak hour from seven to nine in the morning, and then the typical PM peak from, from four to six in the afternoon. We did a 48-hour continuous count on Market Street, Baker Street, and Railroad Street in addition to those turning movement counts at each of the, the common intersections. We also looked through three years' worth of crash data at all intersections throughout the common. So, just to touch on some of the, the crash trends that we observed, the most common crash was a rear-end collision on Main Street approaching the common. This is really due to the, the stop-and-go nature of traffic that is experienced during that PM peak hour. That stop-and-go nature tends to lend itself to a lot of rear-end collisions. There were also a couple of rear-end collisions within the common, particularly during a time when a pedestrian was using the crosswalk. So, a driver would stop as a pedestrian would, was within the crosswalk. The trailing vehicle wouldn't expect that driver to, to stop, and would, would strike the back of it. There are also a couple of side swipe crashes, particularly entering, exiting the common, I should say, from the inner lane. School Street and Central Street, this happened on three occasions within that three-year period, and then also at South Street and Mechanic Street on one occasion. Also, a couple of run-stop signs, particularly, we noticed those at Coacit and Mechanic. And I just also wanted to note that there were two bike collisions within the common, too. There are, there are no formal bike facilities within the, within the traffic network in the common, so just wanted to point that out. Should also note that there were no pedestrian collisions within that three-year period, too, which is important to note. So, looking at the, some of the, the traffic behaviors throughout the common and how we thought we might be able to improve circulation, we came up with this, I'll call it a common master plan for the, the trial period behind me. Not all of these we're, we're looking to implement currently. Currently, before you today, we're just looking to implement the, the approach from Main Street. I'm just going to run through the process of how we got to this point where we are today. So, behind me, you'll see a number of temporary traffic control adjustments that we're looking to make to the common, and these are really looking to be implemented via the use of barrels, temporary signs, temporary striping, so something that can be set up fairly quick and broke down fairly quick. Just going to start with the, the Main Street approach. So, what was, what we had looked at for the original concept was installing a temporary island here at the Main Street approach that would really split traffic as it circulates around the common, enforce vehicles that are in that right turn lane, or that right lane, to turn right and continue up Main Street. Any vehicle that's within that center lane is going to continue through the common. So, what this enables traffic to do that's approaching from Main Street is really have a through or a free movement from Main Street into the common. So, they are given full right to access this, this outer lane, while vehicles that are continuing through the common continue through this, this inner lane. Also, too, we had originally looked at making Bird Street a one-way exiting the common only as part of this, and we were looking to, and we're looking to convert Rock Hill to a one-way entering the common only as part of this. The reason we're looking at, we're looking at making Rock Hill a one-way entering the common only is to eliminate this movement where somebody that's circulating the common from the, the inner travel lane could cut across somebody that's entering from Main Street, entering onto Rock Hill. So, we're trying to avoid that, that conflict that the entrance onto Rock Hill would create. Just continuing to get down, again, I just want to be clear that this is not part of[1781.11] of tonight's proposal, but the, the entire, um, trial period for the common proposal. But similarly, uh, down at South Street and Central, uh, looking at introducing a splitter island that again would force traffic that's in the, uh, the inner lane of the common to continue through the rotary, traffic that's on the outer, uh, lane of the common would either be able to continue to South Street or up through Central Street. And then again, at the intersection with Mechanic Street and Cucasset, again, a similar approach, that inner, inner lane would be forced to, uh, maintain, uh, traffic flow through the common, the outer lane would be able to exit to Mechanic Street or Cucasset So what we did next was we, we took a look at, um, the, we performed a capacity analysis, and, and for these types of intersections, the capacity analysis really looks at the type of, uh, or looks at the amount of delay, uh, for each approach coming into the common, and we assess the conditions of, based on delay for, uh, under the existing geometry and then the proposed geometry, uh, to take a look at what impacts, um, we could expect to see and also, uh, where we could, uh, see the, the greatest decrease in delay associated with these changes. Um, so, the results of the capacity analysis showed a significant reduction in delay for the southbound approach to the common from Main Street. Um, as I mentioned before, when I was going through, uh, the modifications at this intersection, um, it's really the, the southbound entrance to the common becomes a, a free movement, so we're allowing that movement, uh, from Main Street to have free access to that outside lane while traffic that's continuing through the common, uh, is allowed free access to the, the inner lane. As I mentioned before too, we had looked at converting Bird Street for our, to a one-way, uh, roadway. When we did that and we ran our capacity analysis, we ended up, uh, redistributing troop, trips from Bird Street to Mechanic Street to enter the common, uh, and what that ended up doing was really overloading Mechanic Street. I mentioned Mechanic Street as one of the intersections that experiences, uh, recurrent delay, um, and adding those additional trips from Bird Street onto Mechanic really, um, just exacerbated that condition. Also, the, uh, proposed geometric improvements, uh, at School Street and, and Central, uh, really had a limited impact on, uh, the amount of vehicle delay. Uh, as I mentioned, that's, that's one that experiences not quite as much congestion as the other two critical intersections throughout the common, um, so really there, there wasn't uh, too much of a significant difference at that location. Uh, so ultimately, the recommendation that, that we've provided to the town is to progressively implement, uh, a trial of the proposed improvements, uh, the intersections throughout the common. And what I, what I mean by that, as opposed to implementing, uh, um, the splitter islands at each of the three locations, um, as I showed in the initial graphic there, uh, is to just implement one, uh, rather than, than overload, uh, the public and be faced with a number of different traffic circulation changes. So the one that we're recommending on, on starting, uh, this, this trial, uh, at is at the intersection of Main Street, Rock Hill, uh, and Bird Street. And really this, as I mentioned, this location experienced a significant reduction in vehicle delay based on, uh, the model that we prepared, uh, so it has the most potential benefit. Um, it also provides the longest weave distance, so what we're expecting to see is that vehicles that are traveling within that, that inner lane of the roundabout, they're now be forced into the outer lane to make any of those exiting movements. Um, so the stretch of the common that provides the longest distance to be able to make that maneuver is that stretch that comes from, uh, Main Street, really Main Street to South Street. We're recommending that Bird Street remain two-way, given the anticipated, uh, impact to Mechanic Street that a conversion to one-way would be. Uh, and during this trial period, we just wanna make sure that we're closely monitoring traffic behavior, um, including that weaving maneuver that I mentioned, um, and we also wanna be monitoring impacts to the other roadways surrounding the common, so we're looking at, um, um, the other parallel, um, traffic routes that, um, you know, we currently experience some cut-through traffic, but we just wanna make sure that, that those roadways are not experiencing any other traffic, cause any additional traffic or, um, any unexpected impact. Um, so with the successful implementation at the Main Street intersection, uh, we can look into implementing the other, um, trial periods at, at the other, uh, three locations throughout the common. Um, that, that's all I have, Chris, I don't know if you wanna touch on anything else before?
Nope, just to, just to touch on a couple of things, um, like you said, tonight we're focused on the Main Street intersection. We're looking to do a four-week trial, um, of that design, um, with the support of the board, we were to do that, start Monday morning. We would run for four weeks, which would take us to November 22nd, um, which is the Friday before Thanksgiving. That, that allows us, that four-week period allows us to see how it really will work. The first week or two, people are just gonna get used to it. That third and fourth week are when, when we'll actually see if it, if it works. Gives people a chance to get used to it and then, you know, see if they can maneuver and it, and it works the way we expect it to. We did have some questions at the public meeting last week of, if it works, why would you take it down? Um, so that is certainly something that, that is on the table, um, to leave it up and maybe make it, while we go through some final design and analysis from, from PAR Corp, to make it semi-permanent until we can actually get out there and do some construction out there. Additionally to that, um-
Chris, could you explain how you would do that?
Sure, so there's, there's a couple of different ways, you know, the, the initial trial will be done with, with orange barrels, um, they'll be, have lights on them, so they'll be visible at night, well, along with the reflective stripes on them. You know, one of the things, one of the concerns is, we get into December, January, then we start to look at snow. Um, you know, depending on how quick we move forward with the, the final design, uh, we can do construction, you know, we limit people to doing that af- after November 15th because, you know, it doesn't impact the road, um, and you never know when snow's gonna come. So we could do it with, we'll leave the barrels there, we can move them when it's time to plow, um, and then put them back after we've cleared all the snow away, um, that's probably the, the simplest way to do it. You could also get some, um, bolt-in reflective, um, that flop if they get hit, um, they take a little bit of abuse before they start to fall apart, so we could do something more permanent along the lines of that as well. So there's a couple of options we can, we can look at. If the trial's going well, I think it, the comments were, and I think it makes sense to keep it going if people are used to it and it's working. You know, one of the things to, to note is that, um, the police chief was at the public meeting last week, um, he got up and is in full support of, of moving forward with this. One of his, his comments was that the common is 20 miles per hour, um, as you enter from, from all approaches and as you drive around the common, it is 20 miles an hour. So a lot of those weave movements at 20 miles an hour, um, you know, they're, they're not as, they're not dangerous, um, people are, should be going slow enough and they will be onsite and, and helping us out while this trial's ongoing to, to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And he also said that, on game days, they park our crews are exactly where we're proposing this extended island to be, so that that traffic coming down Main Street free flows, um, after games and during ga- before games to get up to 140 as well, so he says it works great. So he's, he's in full support of this as well. Um, and then just two more things, um, really one, but on the south side of the common, um, as you were exit, um, to Central Street and then Cucasset and Mechanic Street, one of the things we had talked about was taking that dashed line that separates the inside lane and the outside lane and making it a solid white line. It was brought up and it was, it, that although the arrow tells you to stay in the inside lane, that dashed line legally allows you to cross it. So we talked about striping that as a solid white line, so that it's just a, it's another visual reminder of people to say, stay in that inside lane, don't exit, which I think would eliminate, well, will help eliminate some of those side swipe movements and accidents that we've had, um, people trying to exit from the inside lane while people are coming off of South Street, and then same thing over at, um, Cucasset and Mechanic Street as well. It's just visual cue just to stay in your lane. I think that's all I have for notes at the moment.
Questions?
Um, I was at the meeting last week, um, I agree with, if it's working, let's not change it, especially when we're taking a street and making it one-way for four weeks. I, I think it will work, so I'm definitely in favor of it and in favor of keeping it if it works. Question, after four weeks, if it works and we decide to keep it, when do we implement the other two proposed changes to the other two intersections?
I think we'd probably wait until the spring to move forward with those. I think we let people get through the winter, let people get used to, continue to get used to that movement up and, on the Main Street section and get rid of the snow before we try anything.
And if the Main Street one works, do we still try the other two as a temporary or do we just go all in and say we're changing it?
I, I would suggest doing those as a temporary as well, it's, it's a little, each one of these is a different condition.
Yeah.
Um, and kinda how I mentioned before, the, um, the Main Street stretch lends itself to that longer weave period, so with implementing these islands at either of the other two locations, we're gonna be shrinking that weave area down even a little bit further, uh, so I think there could be some additional challenges at these, these other two locations.
Anything to that, there's, there's an aesthetics that goes along with this, um, you know, extending that island permanently up at Main Street, you know, we wanna make sure that we're doing that with the look and the feel of the rest of the common. Um, you know, we wanna, I think we wanna go with granite curbing, um, potential for another planter or two, you know, in that, in that island, um, you know, to kinda keep with that feel.
Do what Westwood did and adopt all the islands.
Adopt a bucket.
Anyone else?
So, I don't, it's not that I don't agree with everything that you proposed here, um, I'm keeping an open mind, and the only way to find out what works and what doesn't, cause you can't, you can't simulate human behavior. I think, I think doing the trial is prudent, and I think we should do it. Um, I think each one of these temporary, uh, tests should be done. My only concern really is, if you leave those barrels up or however you do it during snow, and you leave them up, then you take them down, then you put them back up, you know, how are people's behaviors gonna change during those, you know, snow periods? Cause you can't wait until it snows, you gotta take them down before the snow flies in advance.
They'll move real quick on the front end of a loader, with a 13-foot plow on it.
I understand, now you, now you have snow, now you have, you know, cause you're gonna put up signs that say, that say new traffic pattern.
Right.
Okay, now all the barrels are gone, you know? What are you, what are you gonna do then? You, you know what I'm saying? I, I think you just have to rethink.
Yeah.
What you're gonna do if it does work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and by all accounts, we, we hope it does work, cause we wanna, uh, that back up on, on Main Street. And then, you know, going forward, particularly on the, uh, South Street, um, extension, uh, where School Street comes to South Street and heading south on 140, I'm just concerned you're gonna lose people parking on, in, in those spaces diagonally, that wanna go on 140 south, they're gonna have to go all the way around the common to zigzag to get back into, into the, uh, proper lane to get to 140 south, so I think some people are just gonna shy away from those, those parking spaces. And then again, I mean, this is what, why we do the trial.
Yeah, I think that for the, the South Street location in particular, the, the island itself wouldn't extend back as far as these barrels are shown there, it would really be more of a, a striping, uh, gore style of, of treatment, really only the, the only location that would have the, the physical island in the permanent condition would be, you know, something in this, in this range here that maybe helps break out this crosswalk as well. So the, the island itself, I don't think is, is, wouldn't come down here, this would be a solid strength that, that widens out to a, a physical island in this location.
So all, all I'm saying, I understand, you know, we're trying to ease the traffic flow and make, make the flow as, as smooth as possible and, and getting around as seamless as possible, but there's so much emphasis on parking, you have to take into account, how does somebody get into those parking spaces and out and then get into that flow of traffic?
Right.
I think that's gonna be, uh, an interesting scenario, once you do these, uh, these trials, it'd be, uh, really important to collect that data.
Yep, agreed.
Were there many large trucks that were going through, uh, it seems like it's at least every half hour, we have a truck that whether he's lost, wants to get to Route One, uh, coming through the center or coming up Cucasset Street, cause he lost his way to cut to Oak to go to 95. Are those lanes gonna be wide enough so that they can make turns to get to the streets they wanna exit the common from?
Yeah, I think for, oh, just go back to the, the Main Street section, um, we, we did look at, uh, tractor-trailer making this, this maneuver, uh, through here, uh, these, these barrels are going along the, uh, existing lane line, so a vehicle, a, a larger vehicle is gonna be able to make that, that maneuver through, through the common at that spot. And we did collect, um, heavy vehicle data is something that we collect for, through our data collection process too, so we have, we have numbers on that.
And that's down on the, um, Central Street exit, I think that's probably the biggest concern for the larger vehicles, um, you know, to make sure that they can make that movement from that outside lane on the Central Street. Um, you know, the, the fire engines, the ladder truck and any of the large tractor-trailers that do come through there, um, I think when we get to that point, we'll make sure the barrels are placed in a way that allow them to make that maneuver, um, and then we'll look at the permanent design down there. My opinion is, and, and when we get there is that if we do something down there, it'll be flush with existing asphalt, it'll be like a stamped concrete or a stamped colored asphalt, um, almost acting as like a rumble strip that'll keep people in the inside lane, um, not just similar to Westwood with all the way up and down 109, um, where, versus having a raised curbing there. So any of the larger vehicles that for some reason think they need to get, be in the inside lane to make that move, um, will still have the ability to do that.
Another comment?
Sure.
Um, I think, like every, like, like David, I think we just have to put our trust in the professionals, you know, that this is gonna help, um, but we've mentioned a couple of times how our rotary is so different, it is so pedestrian-heavy, so, you know, when I think of free-flowing traffic, where we're gonna free-flow it, people going faster, is right in front of the theater where there's 400 people going in and out multiple, you know, times a week. I, I think we need to make sure we keep an eye to pedestrian safety, an eye to the crosswalks, you know, that Central Street one's already tough enough, um, and just make sure that when we're looking at data, we're not only looking at traffic data, but foot traffic as well.
And that is something that we're, that we're working on with PAR, um, you know, we are looking at, do we need all of the crosswalks that are there? Could they be moved, um, to better suit everybody? Um, there's some places that you don't want them, um, that aren't, aren't there now, um, but some of these things may make it safer, um, in the long run. That piece on Main Street, as we shrink that island or extend that island, now that, um, crossing, and they're only crossing one lane versus crossing two, um, so some of these features will actually help the pedestrian safety, and we are looking at getting recommendations on where we should put some more flashing crosswalk signs, um, I think we need to reduce some of the crosswalk numbers before we move forward with that.
And then add the, I mean, we talked about the flashers last week and I think-
Right.
Those are great.
Yeah.
And worth the money.
So in, in talking to the sidewalks, not that I wanna put more of a burden on, on you guys with plowing, cause that, that is an issue.
Yep.
But in a lot of areas, where they raise the crosswalks, it actually calms traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, they see that, that bump coming, they're gonna intuitively slow down.
Right. Um, yeah, I think-
Yeah, I think, um, in last week's meeting, the, the topic of, of raised crosswalks came up, um, with regards to the common, and, and in my opinion, the, the common's not the most appropriate location for them, just given the amount of volume that, that circulates there and the fact that every, every single vehicle that crosses over though has to slow down, uh, there's a lot of bus traffic that goes through the common that has, uh, issue with some of those raised crosswalks, uh, emergency vehicles, DPW, um, in my opinion, it's, it's not the most appropriate use.
But the speed limit's only 20 miles an hour.
You gotta slow down to let-
That's what you're told, right?
-tend to go over those or so, so.
Chairman, with, with due respect to Dave's comment and Chris and Tim, you probably, we can weigh in on this, that is there, there's the visual effect of sidewalks, the way you paint them, can sometimes draw more attention to them as well, um, and we've seen that in other, other locations around town. And, uh, we've seen that in other, other locations around town and maybe that's a better option as opposed to raised.
Or even like, I'll call it Pat's new speed limit sign, hers now, you know, one of those flashing things that says crosswalk. You know, it's just got a little bit of lights and it draws your attention to make sure someone knows that there's a crosswalk there. You know, as they're looking over their shoulder and weaving in traffic and.
Yeah, I think, I think both of those, both the, the 3D style, style crosswalk and, uh, certainly the addition of flashers are, you know, safety measures that, that could be appropriate here. I will say with the, with the flashing systems, they, they tend to work better when they're actuated by a pedestrian. They're not continuously flashing. Drivers get used to things that continually flash when there's no conflict or no warning or there's no reason to be, um, to perceive any danger. So the, the ones that are only actuated, um, when there's a pedestrian there are typically a more safer option.
And Chris, you said those were like $4,000-ish, right? They weren't astronomical.
No, they're, yeah, they were 4,000, um, per side. So if we, so we would put them on both sides of the crosswalk and that would be about $8,000 at this point in time.
Cause it's solar powered, right?
Yeah.
Any other comments? So you need a, a, a motion by us to proceed with phase one?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion to proceed with the traffic improvements as discussed tonight before the sport.
Phase one.
Phase one.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Great presentation, Chris.
Thanks guys. Appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And remember folks, that's Chris Gallagher.
May I make one, uh, plug?
Nope.
So as you know, I've heard me talk ad nauseam about our conversation on housing and it's starting. So on November 13th, we're having our first community outreach. Stay tuned for more details, but I'm hoping the folks in the audience tune in and, uh, pay attention, come to the meeting, check out online. But so it's November 13th and, uh, we look forward to talking about housing.
That topic is more relevant today than ever in any time in history. There was an article that came out today, um, in CNBC that said that, um, that right now, that, that the amount of housing, uh, that's valued below $200,000 is only at 10% in, in the country right now, which is the lowest point that's, it's, it's ever been. So, um, that and the fact that they're raising, that lower interest rate, interest rates are causing the, the amount of housing, um, inventory to shrink rather dramatically at this point. So that, that means that prices continue to go up and, and the young folks are trying to get housing on, on one end are being shut down as well as the seniors on the other end are being shut out of the market. So more than ever, we need to have that conversation.
We have some graphics in the lobby of Town Hall. Take a look at them because the numbers are fairly compelling when you start to understand, you know, you, you might be okay, but your neighbor might not be okay. So take a look and, uh, we look forward to talking about it.
Thank you Paige.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Gillette Stadium annual event license. Yeah.
So everyone, this is Pat Costello. He's actually our, our town council. He's, he's the original town council that, I know that, that Kate Conley sits in for him a lot and he's one of, well, she's one of the partners at his firm. But Pat is the lead, one of the lead members of the firm and, uh, has been, was here when, when he originally proposed to be part of this, this process for the town. So just as a, a lead into this discussion, uh, Peter Tam is also here, uh, representing the, the craft group from Goldston Stores. And what we have for you tonight is, um, you sort of, your first look at this, even though we, we've discussed it for what, three, four years now. We've been going back and forth about creating an annual license opportunity for having events and, uh, games and, and, uh, and all kinds of things that occur at Gillette Stadium. The, as the board will know and, and has experienced that we've gone, we have typically throughout the year, anywhere from eight to 10 different hearings that occur based upon the, the types of events that occur at the stadium. What's happened in a lot of venues across the country now, and it's even more commonly happening even here in Massachusetts at Boston. I think Boston does this as well as Mansfield, is that we've, they've gone to an annual license, uh, scenario where, which would, uh, allow the, the board, the, uh, the proponent, in this case, the craft group to come before the board sometime, we think probably April of, of each year, uh, to actually present to the board with a listing of all the events that occur over that next 12 month cycle. The reason it starts in April is because the NFL schedule comes out and usually around the middle of April. And then that is, is a, of obviously a very important piece of information for how the events occur beyond, beyond that period of time. At that point also, where there'll be a good indication of, of where the rev schedule is. Uh, also the, um, the concert season will, will be a good indicator at that point as well. So most of the information that was needed to have that annual license will be in place and will be presented as part of that license. This particular document has gone through multiple iterations. And we've worked hard on this to get it to this point and I, I appreciate the cooperation of everybody in, in trying to make this happen. Cause it is an important piece of information and an important document for the town. What's also a piece that has to be done is that because the, uh, the state statutes for licensing, for annual licenses usually runs from January through December 31st of each year. So which would mean that if, if unless we came up with a legislative, legislative relief, we would have to, the license would have to be, uh, we'd have to come, this process would have to start earlier than that. And it would actually fall into the, into the, uh, the, the 12 month cycle. So what we were asking to do as part of this as well is to file for special legislation that would allow the cycle to go from, for Gillette Stadium to run from April, from May 1st of each year to April 30th of the following year. So therefore, um, we would only have to do that once instead of twice throughout the year. Now, if there are certain events that occur that, you know, are unique events that, that would occur anytime during the year, um, the, the proponent, the, the craft group would have to come before this, for the board and actually ask for an amendment to that license to include that at a particular event. Or at any time throughout the year, if there was a question about a particular event, the board could still request them to come before you to clarify the situation and the events. The police chief and the fire chief have weighed in on this process since, uh, have heavily weighed in on this process. And, uh, they have a lot of authority in this license as well. So particularly of course, public safety being the number one concern that we all are, are concerned, have, have major consideration here. So that's the summary of the issue. I'm going to let Pat talk about maybe some of the more details beyond that. And certainly Peter can speak as to why it's important from the, from the proponent's perspective as well.
Great. Thank you, Bill. It's good evening, members of the board. Uh, as noted, this is not a novel idea. This is something we've literally been back and forth with the craft group or now, um, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC as the licensee for three and a half to four years. We, we were engaged in multiple matters relative to the stadium. We, we felt it was a priority in putting a couple of things to rest before we delved into this particular area. We did successfully resolve the other issues. We met several times over the past year, uh, with council and representatives from the craft organization to try to fine tune this document. And I do think it's at a point now where it's ready for, for you folks to take a look at and, uh, you know, let us know what issues, concerns or, or comments you may have regarding the license, um, as an annualized document rather than the individual event license process that we have right now. As Bill noted, this is very common in this day and age for large venues to have an annual license where the events are predictable and can be, uh, determined ahead of time. I, I can assure you that having reviewed the formal, uh, the license we're currently using now, this document incorporates the, the protections and the level of discretion that the Board of Selectment would have as a licensing authority. So we're not foregoing or waiving any rights in that regard. In my view, what it does is provide a more streamlined and a more predictable process, both for the board a- as well as for the licensee. Based on recent conversations with them, um, the craft folks believe that the spring, as Bill noted, April and May of each year is a point in time where things somewhat come together in terms of their upcoming events, whether it be for the summer season, the NFL schedule is, is determined and the rev schedule comes more into, to focus. We think that it would be efficient for both the town as well as for the licensee to have a single annual license that would address all such events without skimping on any information relative to each particular event. The license still requires that the applicant submit with the license application, a summary sheet, a data sheet, if you will, for each event that it is aware of at that point in time that will be encompassed into the license. The town will have ample time to review the documents submitted. Should the board have any questions or concerns relative to the license? Should the police chief or fire chief have any concerns relative to particular events? They can always be addressed individually at the application stage and/or later on even. There is still broad discretion factored in on public safety matters whereby the police chief and the fire chief can impose additional requirements should they deem them necessary based on events that they have evolved since the license issued. So I, I, I believe that, uh, this is a document that is certainly worthy of the board's consideration. I do think it, 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 it brings us up to speed, so to speak, with trends in, in other venues that do have large, uh, events, uh, venues such as this. And I, I do believe that as, as your counsel, I can tell you that it does incorporate the level of protection and security as well as the level of discretion that the board currently possesses under the general laws. We're not waiving any of that in this particular document. Notably, the document, um, and I'll talk in a minute about the point Bill raised about the, uh, term of the license, which is presently determined by statute. We'll, we'll get into that in a minute, but the license incorporates the same level of insurance requirements that, that currently apply. It incorporates the same indemnification language that we have been utilizing, that our insurance company and insurance council have prepared and recommended for us. That applies, as I said, for each event that is to be su- the subject of the license, there is a data sheet that will have to be individually prepared and submitted with the license application. So that the board will have the same level of knowledge or information relative to events that it gets now. You'll just get it at one point in time and will have an opportunity to review it and raise questions at the initial license application, uh, date. There is also an opportunity for the board to weigh in on any material change in the license terms or the addition of any new events to the license. The way the agreement is currently structured, should the licensee wish to change events or add additional events to the license, they provide notice to the town whereupon if the board has any questions or concerns relative to the impacts that these additional events might have on public safety, you can require a full public hearing on the matter. You can require additional information to be submitted. And that additional event will not be allowed unless and until the hearing process and your approval is obtained. Should the board, upon review of the request for additional or changed items, not believe that there is any material risk of an increased public safety concern, we don't have to have a hearing. It will be deemed incorporated into the license, provided that they provide us with appropriate notice. And thus we will proceed accordingly with, um, the same terms and conditions of this license applying to the new event. And the same fee structure will apply to the universe of events that are incorporated into the annual license as applies to the individual license applications right now. So the fees will be the same, the insurance requirements imposed upon the licensee will be the same. The licensee will continue to agree to indemnify and hold us harmless to the same extent that they are now under the individual license, uh, process we, we're commonly abiding by. And, uh, there is again, one thing we, we were very focused on during negotiations is making sure that our police and fire chiefs had the right to review each upcoming event as they were transpiring and to alter the public safety, health and order conditions as they deemed appropriate. As we all know, things change, conditions can change. We do have the right to intercede in such circumstances where we feel that the public safety or well-being is, is, is potentially threatened to impose additional con- conditions, whether they be, uh, traffic related, uh, pu- public safety related EMS, whatever it may be. Uh, there is that level of oversight or input allowed during the term of the license as well. That's the general overview of the license document itself and, and the process that would apply to the issuance of the license. The provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 183A, which is the entertainment license for, for sporting events, entertainment events, does have a, a provision therein that says every license issued under that section, um, terminates on December 31st of each calendar year. Given the unique situation that the licensee in this particular situation faces with, as Bill noted, primary event, uh, schedules being determined in the late spring or mid-spring, we think it would be more appropriate, more constructive and efficient if we were able to issue an annual license uh, with a term that coincides with the periods of time when the licensee can best advise the board what events are going to take place and when. Uh, May 1st roughly appears to be that date under this licensing scheme, given the football schedule coming out then, summer concert schedules being tightened up at that point in time and, and the, the soccer schedules coming to fruition then as well. What we're going to propose, uh, for the board's consideration is a, a special act that would quite simply amend the termination clause in, in, uh, Chapter 140, Section 183A to state, rather than ending on December 31st, uh, no license shall, the, exceed the term of one year from the date of its issuance unless earlier revoked. We would retain all rights to revoke the license as we always do at any time. Yet the license whenever issued would, would continue in existence for a one-year period from that date. Ideally, the way things look right now, that would be like a, a spring license commencement date and a spring termination date. And again, because of the, the, the adjustment provisions within the license document itself, events can be added to or modified with the board's consent throughout that term. So I don't really see any issue with that, um, modification. I do think it makes sense in many ways. If we, if our objective here is to streamline, uh, the process, make it simpler or more efficient for both sides, more predictability, that would be a, an ideal provision. Now, the way to effect such a special act would be twofold. Number one, uh, town meeting could authorize the board, as I'm sure it's, it's done on numerous occasions, to file a petition with the general court for special legislation to modify a special act as it relates to Foxborough. There is an alternative provision in the amendments to the constitution that allows for such a, a special act if the governor recommends, um, a modification. We think for purposes of expediency, if we were to approach the, the administration and utilize our, our legislative representatives in Beacon Hill jointly to advocate for such a modification, there's a possibility we might even be able to get this in place for next spring so that the 2020 slash 21 license could, could, uh, operate under the new terms. So we, well, we certainly wouldn't, uh, the, the board would have to approve any such move to, uh, uh, you know, authorize our, our legislative delegation and/or the governor on our behalf to seek such a, a change in the legislation. That would be the only change in the statute that we'd be looking for, just extending the license termination date from 1231 of each year to within one year from the date of issuance of the license. Happy to answer any questions.
On that note, like the Boston Garden comes to mind because the Bruins and the Celtics start in the fall and they go hopefully through June and win the playoffs. Do they have any special provisions?
I do, I do believe Boston has some special licensing authority that other cities and towns in the state do not have. I'm not sure, uh, Chris, if that goes right to the date of the license, but I, I'm, I do know that they, they issue, uh, an annual license or a, a multi-event license, not an individual event by event license.
Okay. And then, um, a couple of questions on the actual draft that we have of the, um, event license. Is this the latest draft that we have? It's dated 5/30/19?
Yes. We, we, we actually talked about it again over the course of the summer and we also discussed the, the special legislation. But we wanted to make sure that all, both sides are satisfied with it from a staff it from a staff level anyways before we brought it to you folks. This is the latest draft.
After the opening paragraph, number one, it says, "and shall expire on December 31st."
That's carryover language. Unless and until we get special legislation, that's the way the annual license would have to work.
So, if, that was where I was going. So, if we couldn't get special legislation, the governor said, "No, I'm not doing it."
Right.
Go to town meeting. They say, "No, we don't want to. We can still do this annual license. We just have to do it in," right? I mean--
That's correct. No, you're absolutely correct. If we do not obtain the special legislation, this language will be what will be in the next license, if the board--
This all can still happen, the annual license, without that.
Absolutely.
I think the key point, though, is that, think about it, that, you know, the NFL schedule doesn't even, actually goes into January.
Yeah.
So, we'd be cutting off a portion of the schedule and have to restart, have to come up with a new license using the same NFL schedule for two calendars.
Yes. Okay. And again, too, I think my entire tenure on the board, we've been talking about this. So, I'm very comfortable with it all.
Yeah, that goes with me as well. I think I may have been chairman when we first started.
Yes, I think you are, in fact.
And, you know, early on, one of our concerns was waiving any of our rights as the licensing authority, so I'm glad to see that we still retain those rights in this draft. So, like Chris, I'm very comfortable with where this is now, with the caveat that we do retain our rights as the licensing authority.
Yeah.
I think it's really crucial, if we're going to have an annual license, that there's definitely got to be a mechanism in there so that if something is added, that it would allow public safety to review the potential of an add-on and have an opportunity for this board to have a unique hearing for that particular event as they're added that are not planned per se, but like a pop-up thing--
Right.
--that could present challenges.
And the way it is drafted now, Mr. O'Leary, is once they submit the written notification to the board of an additional event, you folks would have, it's only 15 days, it's a short period as it's drafted now, but just to review that request, and if you believe or you deem that any aspect of this new event could cause some issue with respect to public safety, you have a right to just notify them that, in fact, we do want to have a public hearing on it, and we'll go through that whole process.
But that doesn't eliminate the public, the police, both police and fire, review of the entire event--
Right.
--as part of that.
Thank you.
So, no financial change to the town as a result of this, is what I'm hearing you say?
No.
Okay. And--
Though, I will note that this whole thing started during the conversation when, during the seats that were taken out of the end zone. And that's, and this sort of folded into that process, but we reached agreement on how to resolve that issue, and then this was the second phase of that discussion, was this piece here.
And, I mean, I've never seen the other one, the old one. I don't know if it's possible to upload that, not that I have a comment, but, you know, we see the new one and we hear you telling us, but when we, you know, go back and think about stuff--
Sure.
--it's without any kind of summary.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no further comment on my whole tenure. I've heard about this also. I think it's a great idea. Sitting here now, what do you need from us to go forward?
Well, the thought would be that if the board is comfortable with moving this along, I think you would, you'd want it to prove it as a conditional approval with really two caveats, that if it'd be approved, that if, even with, if it goes to December 31st, it would still be approved, but if it gets amended to change the date through the legislation, I think that would, it would be approved both ways. So, you'd have the ability to do it either way. Now, I think you'd really need two actions. One is to proceed to submit something to the governor for consideration of this, of the legislative piece.
So, how would we do that? Would you write a letter or--
Be a letter with the actual legislation, and legislation was made part of your package so you have it.
Right.
It's just a couple lines.
It's very straightforward.
Simple piece, very straightforward piece. And then, and so, the first action would be to conditionally approve the license, subject to approval of the legislative authority.
And if select woman gives and wants to review the existing license, obviously, for comparison purposes, we can afford our time for that.
I guess I just don't, I guess I don't understand why we'd even conditionally approve. Why don't we just move the legislation forward and then come back and review it when and if that's approved? Is there a reason that we don't want to do that?
Yeah, because we still have, we still have the January 1st to December 31st.
Yes, and also, if we're without the annual entertainment license, we're still working on a piecemeal basis, so even though the individual licenses we may be issuing may not be burdened by that December 31st date, it would still be, it'd be crazy because we'd be looking at one-year periods now from each date that each respective license is issued. It would be difficult, in my view, to track, you know, the terms of the multiple licenses that would be out there. The concept is to have one license covering the vast majority, if not all, of the events that are licensed in a year, and have the license in effect for a one-year period from the date of issuance of that license. So, without the first piece of the puzzle, the annual license, we could certainly pursue the special legislation, but that would still give us like a rotating term, if you will, for all of the respective licenses that are issued. I think it's a little complicated from an administrative perspective.
So, we're still looking at an annual license?
No, I get that. I just, you know, I, okay.
Mr. Chairman, maybe Peter could weigh in a little bit more from Goulston Stores, Peter Tam, on the reasons why that would still be important.
Thank you, Bill, and for the record, Peter Tam of Goulston and Stores. I appreciate having a few minutes, and I really can't summarize this more succinctly than both Pat and Bill have, and we're on a first-name basis because we've spent a lot of time on this. Essentially, what you have today is an ad hoc, piecemeal way of approving event licenses. And unlike sort of a pilot for traffic improvements at the Rotary, there's little risk here. I think what Pat has summarized is that there's no change to the protections and the oversight that this board has, but what you're getting is the ability to comprehensively evaluate all the events at a single time and be able to assess them by the same rules. And that's why we, on behalf of the Kraft Group, like it, because all the time that we spend before you for different events can be minimized. We can plan accordingly. We can assess accordingly. We know specifically what the traffic demand management requirements are that we would spend with the police department on, and they're consistent. And we've, there's been a thoughtful approach that you'll see in the draft before you where different, you know, a football or an athletic event is treated differently than a concert event, and you see that. So, I think, Pat, it's up to the board as to how they want to proceed, but I think what Bill and Pat have described is exactly right. We would like to invest in the annual event license and spend the time with the board at a time that's appropriate. The special legislation is going to be an issue today, whether or not you do the annual event, because of that particular provision which Pat mentioned in one of the three laws that governs this. And so, we'd like to fix that as it pertains to the stadium in Foxborough specifically because of the unique nature of football in particular, and we should fix that, and we want to support the town and help to fix that so we don't have to appear before you, essentially, at the end of the year, not knowing when football is going to be, you know, when the schedule is going to come out.
Yeah, I don't know if my question, maybe if I'm not understanding the answer, if maybe my question was misunderstood, but it's not a question of if the annual license at all. It's more about the order of doing things. So, you know, getting the legislation first and then approving it versus, it sounds like you want to approve it first conditionally and then get the legislation.
Well, the, I guess, for the board's consideration, you have to ask yourself, is there value to having a comprehensive assessment of events at the stadium? That's question number one. And then, question number two is, regardless of where you come down on that, we need to clean up this particular provision of the general laws.
So, I think maybe I can help you with that, Leah. So, if we were to do this first license, we wouldn't do it probably until April of next year anyways.
That's right.
So, I'm saying why not just approve it in March? The, like, why not go through the legislature and then come back and look at this draft?
I think--
Then at that point, it'll be--
Going back to just thinking about what you just said, it'd be nice to be able to go to the governor and says, "We're ready, this is conditionally approved," saying that "We're ready to do this if you can, if you can help us fix this piece."
Yeah, my question's not about why to do it or if to do it, it's more about--
There is also--
--the timing of why not, why now versus March if we're not looking to do it, Leah.
Yeah, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer here, but I do agree that we would like some predictability here. There's going to be, what we would owe you if you approved this concept is, we would then be preparing for the spring in a filing based on your approval this evening, right? And that would, it could take us from May to the end of the year, the end of the calendar year, or if special legislation has been adopted, it would carry over till the next spring. And what we would have for you in May is a completed application based on this license, along with the term, the completed insurance provision, preliminary scheduled events, and a stadium event data sheet for every single event.
And the fees for each one of the events.
Yeah. And just something to think of, too, is that's typically when our board turns over, is that first week of May, which is change of chairs, change of members, so just something to be aware of.
Well, we could, we could do it at, you know, just talking with Bill in advance, we could do it at a time that's appropriate. So, it doesn't have to be May 1st, it could be May 15th.
So, I think, I think one of the benefits of approving the annual license now, there's predictability there, whereas the special legislation, there's zero predictability. It could, it could be three months, it could be a year. I mean, we've gone through, I mean, look at what we're trying to do with the child safety bill.
Right.
I mean, going on, what, three years now? So, I mean, it seems benign, but you never know--
Right.
--you know, what's going on up at the State House and what becomes a priority and what somebody else might want to add on to it. Hey, this looks like it's a good idea, let's add some additional legislation to it.
And I think Peter's point is well-taken, that when the governor and the legislature, quite frankly, are reviewing this special act, it would be nice for them to have a model of what the license is going to look like rather than not knowing what they're voting to approve, in essence. So, I think that could be helpful.
I think, I think my experience dealing with the legislature is that they like to know that the community is in full support of the license itself when you bring the piece that changes the date on it. So, I think that's, that's my reasoning to having to want it to be done that way. But, it's a fair point, Leah.
Yeah, my point is if something changes in the legislature, you know, we have to come back anyway and do it, but I see both sides of it, it's just really a timing question.
It just gives the people at the stadium more time to plan out for events, concerts, whatever.
And I take the point, I think Mr. O'Leary identified, that there certainly will be changes over the course of the year, and so, there's a process that we focused on that anticipates that. But that's no worse than what you have today, and we try to minimize those. There's a number of requirements where we can't be hasty about it, we have to, depending on whether it's an addition versus a change, we have to submit in advance, and then you have the opportunity to call a hearing if appropriate.
Right. And I will say, and Peter would agree with me, that was perhaps the most contentious point we negotiated over time, because they're on a tight schedule in terms of booking events. They have, they're at risk of getting a license when they commit to performers or entertainers coming in, so they need relatively quick turnaround. Yet, we don't want quick turnaround from your perspective, so that you have ample time to weigh an additional event. So, while the notification time to the board and then the 15-day period within which the board has to act is relatively tight, all that you have to do is believe that there is something that could, again, impair public safety or public health with respect to an event to trigger the public hearing process. It's a subjective judgment, certainly to be made in good faith on your part based on a legitimate concern, but it would give the opportunity, you know, to Mr. O'Leary's point about having full review and public input on an additional event.
All right. Did you get all that in?
Yes.
Do you think you could make a motion?
Perhaps, Pat, would you maybe--
Sure.
--give him some wording for that?
I'd suggest a motion along the lines of, the board vote to approve conceptually an annual license for events at Gillette Stadium in the format submitted to the board here tonight, and two, to authorize staff to work with our state legislatures and the governor's office to craft the special legislation that was submitted for your review this evening.
So, you might want to take it as two--
Two separate ones. Yeah, absolutely.
I can't take notes.
Okay.
But was that, did you get that?
Yeah, yeah, it's, well, it's taped, so we'll get it.
We'll get it. So, okay, so moved.
Make a motion as the public has heard tonight on, number one, to approve conceptually the annual license for stadium events.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Make a motion to authorize, moving forward with the potential of working with the governor's office to obtain legislation that would fit in with the needs of both our community and the Kraft Group.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, favor. Ready for the work on this.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
My thanks to both these gentlemen for a long, a long process, but thank you for some fine work here. Thank you very much, it was great. Great work with both you on this.
We look forward to seeing you in the spring.
Once.
Once, yeah.
Thanks.
Selectmen's update. Anybody have anything for selectmen's update?
Just hot off the press, the Veterans Day ceremony is going to feature the 215th Army Band this year.
Do we know anyone in the band?
Yeah. One of their trombone players, one of Foxborough's finals.
There you go. Awesome.
My son.
Just also, as an update, the rec department's having their annual Halloween costume parade on 10/26. They meet at the IGO at 2:40. Someone brought up a good point to me about the, I mean, it's great that we have the Schneider lot now, but at night, there's no lights. Might be something we might want to address going forward. Maybe bring it to George's attention. I mean, not George.
So, it's like, okay--
Roger.
Roger, Roger, yeah.
Went to school with a George Hill, and that's why I keep calling him George. All right, Roger, what do you think?
I don't know that we could actually build lighting there because it's their property.
Right.
But if there is lighting in the area, maybe that can be redirected somehow. I'm not sure--
Just a thought.
We'll have to inquire about it.
Yeah. All right. And this is very disconcerting, the letter we got from the IBEW.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, we, there's a story behind that, and I actually sent it, forwarded to Bill Eukenner, who was the chairman of the building committee, and actually, I think it's actually a little, it's a little, it's not entirely accurate by stating it that way. What's happened is that the same bid was accepted by four other bidders in that project. They, the bid they accepted was, is a minority-owned business, which brings the project into compliance with the required minimums for minority representation. It's a, it's a women-owned business that actually has that info, so the determination, actually, all, the other, there were five bidders in this project, four of them used that same bidder for that project, so that the amount of savings overall for the project is still lower than-- is still lower than, than any of the other bids as well. So to say it, they say it one way is that the town is being cheated out of money, is actually not accurate, because the overall cost of the project was about a million and a half dollars lower than what was anticipated. So in that, in all four, the higher bidders as well use the same person. So there was only one company that used the non, and this happens to be a union-represented company, whereas the other four were not, the other four, the other company is not. So this is, they're advocating for union workers, union workforce, and we understand that, and they have the right to do that, but to say that the town is being somehow cheated out of some money in this case is not an accurate reflection of really what happened.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, Bill?
So there's just a couple things to bring to your attention. One is that today I met earlier with the EPA representatives and DEP representatives to talk about the Hathaway Patterson site, is everybody familiar with that site? That's the area located off County Street, where the parking lot has been placed, where we've been using it as a commuter parking lot area. That was a superfund site at one time, and now has been, since, since taken off that list. But they still have to do reviews of that, of that property for several years going forward into the future, just to make sure that there is no additional concerns coming out of that location. The five-year review proved to be, proved to be very successful, and they pointed out some things to us, there is some cracks in the pavement which we'll have to fill, which we will do in the spring, and also, they wanted us to sweep the site, which will be actually done within the next week or two. So we're fully appreciative of the fact that this is, the site is still intact, is doing, is doing very well, based upon the mitigation that was given to it. Just a reminder, the AdCom is meeting tomorrow night from, from 7 to 9, we think, right? We hope, right? 7 to 9.
Yeah, we'll be here.
All right, we'll be here tomorrow night from 7 to 9, and there's, there are four articles remaining that have to be recommended, the other remaining articles were approved, the other eight remaining articles were approved by the, recommended by the advisory committee. Articles one, two, and three still require a recommendation, as well as Article 12, then that relates to the board's request to try and do the, they have, they have the hearing part, they're allowing the board the authority to appoint the town manager to do that work, as opposed to doing it yourself in all cases. So that, that particular provision is being looked at a little bit closer, there was a question raised after, what if there was a legality issue with that, whether that could be done legally? Town councilors are of the opinion they think it can, because it has been done in a couple other communities, and since that time, there's been further look to see if there was done by, through special act, by doing it that way, and in the cases that we're aware of, that was not the case. So we think it can be done by bylaw, as was proposed in this instance as well. We're just waiting to hear back from the AG's office. If the AG office says that it can't be done, then we'll just amend it on the floor, and we'll provide you with an amendment as a part of the motion to correct that, and hold off until a further town meeting where we could correct that, that particular situation. It'd have to be done by special act if that would be the case.
Then you said one, two, and three, they haven't voted on yet.
So one, two, and three, one is the money to put money into stabilization account, when we're recommending a $250,000 deposit of money into that account, which would then bring the account well above the minimum required, which is $100,000, the minimum required, and right now, it's about $55,000, so this is the first opportunity for us to address that, once free cash has been certified, well, we're in the process of certifying it right now, and we're recommending that five, $250,000 be put into that account for capital stabilization. The stabilization account itself is actually over the required minimum, it's about, we're required to have 5%, and we have actually 5.5% in our general stabilization account. The fact that we have two stabilization accounts that actually act as one, so we're actually over and above the required minimums by actually a wider margin than 5.5% by having those two amounts in. But I'll be discussing that a little bit at the, at the summit coming up on Thursday. Tomorrow night, the board, the AdCom will think of item one, item two, which is the amendment to the administration budget, and three is the police cruiser. So if any of the board members certainly want to advocate for that, I think tomorrow night would be the good time to do that. I think we've had a lot of input into that discussion so far, and I think the AdCom has a lot of information about it, and certainly, if the board wants to participate, you certainly can do that. Again, the financial summit's on Thursday night from 6:30 to 8, will be held right here in this same room, and so I welcome, welcome everyone to attend. The advisory committee, the board selectmen, the school committee will all be in attendance that night, as well as the public, and any interested residents, as well as town employees or committees that want to participate in the discussion as well. On Saturday, I leave for the ICA MATE National Conference in Nashville, Tennessee this year, and I'll be away all of next week, but will be, and will be returning the following week. Really important point, that the train commuter rail starts, the commuter rail will start here in Foxborough on October 21st, I believe the first train's around 5:47 in the morning, and so we certainly welcome anybody who wants to be out there to see that happen, that's a little bit of an historic action that day, and so we're very pleased to see that finally come to fruition. So this will be sort of a soft opening at this point in time, but we'll do a more formalized open, opening later on, with a little bit more, a bit more of a sermon, I think we want to make sure that they, everything works, is on time, and works the way it's supposed to work before we have the formal send-off. Mike and I will be doing interviews, I think I'll still send you a thunder for a mandatory placement, we're starting that process, phone interviews tomorrow, and then in-person interviews we hope by Friday. And then finally, just the special town meeting is scheduled for November 4th, at, which is a Monday night at 7:30 PM at the high school, and there are 12 articles for consideration at that time. That's all I have.
Can I just have one additional point, and that is that our DPW director, Roger Hill, has given us his intention to retire in the first week of January, so we have posted that position, it's on the HR page of the town's website, and we've started the active recruitment process, and where that's going to run through the two sets of holidays, we've given that 10 weeks, to give us plenty of time, and we're building the team to do that recruitment. So it's quite an extensive job description, and you can see it on the HR website, that's all I have.
What's the team going to look like for the interview process? Like, how extensive?
So it's going to, there's going to be several members of the staff, myself and Bill will be involved in that, the water commission will be involved, we will have someone who's, who's been, actually, we'll have two former DPW directors, actually one former and one active DPW directors, as well as our-
We should get a member of the board, us board deserve as well, in this one, as well, for, because seeing it's a major department head.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry I didn't convey that message to you, but we should do that, because we typically have done that for anyone that's a major department head.
And then, you know, we plan on having the building commissioner and the planning director involved in that as well. Any other questions on that recruitment? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Ed, action item? Motion to approve a public event application for Halloween parade and trick-or-treating on 10/26/2019 from 2:30 PM to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept the firefighter's assistance grant in the amount of $138,727 and 27 sets.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept a gift donation of $2,500 to the recreation department from Stephen and Susan Berlone for the booth playground.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept a gift donation of $112 to the veteran services department from the Fisher School Sunshine Water Fund in memory of Philip Conway.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept a gift donation of $250 to the veteran services department from James S. Daly Jr. and Paula M. H. Daly.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept a gift donation of $100 to the veteran services department from El Grasso in memory of Philip T. Clark.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept a gift donation of $10,000 to the Boydin Library from John N. Spinney and Aaron S. Alperon Charitable Giving Trust to be used for the Spinney Speakers Series cost.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve the 9/30-19 meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve the 10/1-2019 meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I guess, just under discussion, we had, I had a couple people reach out to me, I know people reached out to Bill too, we're still taking meeting notes, that was just talk way in the future, so although there's no one in the seat tonight, just letting the public know-
All right.
-there's still meeting minutes happening, because there was some confusion with that talk about special legislature in the future.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
All those in favor? All right, Ed? Is there another hike? No, move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everybody.